All right, good afternoon. Placerville is 4:01. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I want to thank you all for being here on a Friday night, and I'm hoping that we can move through everything quickly while still giving an opportunity for the community to give their feedback. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Regina, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember Noe?
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa will be noted as absent. Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda is announcements to the public. Do my council colleagues have anything to add at this time? All right. I do want to just take a quick moment to kind of set the stage for this special meeting tonight. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to emphasize the urgency of the Perks Court Navigation Project and to daylight the gravity of the situation of homelessness within the city of Placerville, and to encourage our partners at the county to stay the course and move the Perks Court Navigation Center project forward. Some people have asked, like, why are we doing this on a Friday night? The reality is, in order for us to make a statement on behalf of the whole city council, we have to do it in a public meeting, and by the time we have a chance to read the Board of Supervisors' agenda and notice it appropriately is Friday. So that is why we are here. I want to give my sincere thanks to staff and my colleagues and the public for taking time this afternoon to be here and hear this important item. All right. With that, we will move to item four, adoption of the agenda.
Move for adoption.
Second. All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So this brings us to our discussion item tonight, and this is to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the El Dorado County Board of Supervisors regarding the proposed Perks Court Homeless Navigation Center, encouraging the county to move forward with the project. And Mr. Morris, our city manager, has the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good to be here with you tonight. I am not sure exactly how to go through this, but I'll try and just kind of outline some of the things that I went through in my staff report. I think that the main thing to focus on tonight that we want to do is the letter that has been prepared, the draft letter that we prepared, for your consideration and determine if there is anything, you know, changes that should be made to that. I think, based on our past response, I think we're pretty much all in favor of what we're recommending here tonight, but it's just kind of the details that are in that letter. So let me go through a few things here. I had put in, you'll notice in the letter, it starts back in September of 2019 when we really tried to get some things started. And if you think about that, that's about three years from now. And I'm not sure until tonight, when we're talking about potentially what could happen at Perks Court, there's been a lot of progress made. In terms of something that is happening right now, there has been a lot of work, temporary work, in terms of, you know, the nomadic shelter and attempts to do things, but in terms of a real potential solution, moving into something that can help with the issues that we have, I don't believe there's been anything substantive done over the last three years. As you know, that was the meeting that was held, and I think all of you, well, Jackie, you probably weren't on the council yet, but, meeting that was held at the fairgrounds included the county board of supervisors, the city council, and South Lake Tahoe City Council. Subsequent to that, we sat down and worked, and we developed a homeless policy that we put together, that we would work together to try to identify ways to resolve the issues, not resolve completely, but address the issues that we were facing regarding homelessness. And that went on for some time. We adopted the policy, both us and the county adopted that policy, agreeing to work together. So last year, approximately this time, is when the council went to the board, sent information to the board, and said, "Look, we've got to do something." Now, I see a little bit earlier on this, the June-July area is when we sent something to them, say, "We need to get something, even if it's temporary, up and running to avoid the potential fire danger that we face with the camps throughout the city and in the county." And there was a lot of talk, and seemed to be agreement to move in that direction. Obviously, at that time, you know, that was deemed as a little bit aggressive in being able to reach those goals, to get something last year before a fire danger, but we continued to work toward that and continued to push and push. Earlier this year, as you know, I believe it was in January, the COC released their strategic plan, which strongly recommended a nomadic shelter as one of the high priorities in their, excuse me, a navigation center, excuse me. And we managed to get through last winter, as you know, we assisted with a nomadic shelter to help with some of the needs there. And we started into this year with the hopes that we were going to move forward and find a solution in terms of some sort of shelter navigation center to remove the camps that are out there that have potential to start fires. And we moved forward with that, and we made progress, step forward, step back. The county came back with some potential sites, as you recall, the two hotels up on Broadway were potential temporaries, well, either temporary or long-term. Our recommendation was that they could only be considered as temporary and not long-term, and they weren't our first choice. The Prose Road site came up, the Masonic Lodge that is there as a potential site that could be, probably stood up fairly quickly. We also, with that one, said we didn't recommend that site, and there's various reasons for that. If you look at things like pedestrian traffic, and I know people say, "Well, we're not going to have pedestrians come in there." They can't, it's not walk-up, you have to be referred to the navigation center to get there. And so they would probably be driven there by somebody that refers them to there. But I have a hard time believing, with my experience, and there's many people out here who have a ton more experience than I do than working with the homeless, but I have some over the last several years. And I have a hard time believing that somebody is not going to walk away from that center when they decide, "I need to go somewhere, or I'm not going to stay here." And as you know, there's virtually no pedestrian facilities in that area, either on Prose Road or on Cold Springs, I believe, on that side of the road. That's one concern. Another concern that I have with Prose Road, and as I've looked at it more, is there are no outside facilities available there. It's all parking lot on the outside. And again, I don't think it's good to keep someone cooped up inside a building 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with no availability of any outside, you know, place to be outside. And there's other things related to that. There's a daycare center across the street, there's a mobile home park right next door to that, or very close to it, anyway. And so for those reasons, we recommended that that was, we did not approve that site, and let the county know, "We do not recommend that that be considered further, because we don't feel it's a good site." And that was portrayed to the county earlier this year. Long story short, we moved forward and identified Perks Court as the primary site that seemed to make the best sense. The county then entered into an agreement to look at a feasibility study to see what it would take to do that. They completed that feasibility study that said, "Yes, it will work. It can support the sprung structure, which is the facility that would be built there. We can get water and power to that. Those have to be brought to it, and there's a cost to do that." And then there's some issues, a little bit of issue with the road widening that may need to be done there, but nothing that was insurmountable that couldn't be accomplished. And then, as you recall, they came to the city also and asked that we contribute what they showed as a shortfall of $287,500, and the council agreed to do that, contingent on a strong focus or a priority, I should say, on removing the camp up on Upper Broadway that we currently have in the city, which we all know is the largest camp in the city and the largest camp in the county, both. And it's extremely a problem for us and an issue that we're concerned about. The county considered that. There were some issues at their board meeting. I'm not sure exactly what that was, but for some reason, there was something left off their agenda, and so they were unable to vote on it at that first date. They scheduled a second meeting to do that, and at that second meeting, there was an issue with one of the supervisors who had a complaint filed against them with the FPPC, which did not allow them to vote, did not allow the board to move forward with it on that date. And they said, "Let's bring it back on August 23rd," which is next Tuesday. So that brings us to the point where we are today, and why the mayor called this special meeting, in order to write this letter and to present it to the board, to encourage them to move forward. We've made a lot of progress. We're right on the doorstep of having something that could work. Now, I want to emphasize, even with all that that was done, they said the earliest that this navigation center could be up and running would be January, and that was a month ago when they said that. So I'm going to say probably February now. And each time this gets delayed, that date's going to move back. And I'm concerned that, once again, we may be sitting here again next year saying, "Okay, we're still not ready." And I hope that that's not the case. I hope that this can move forward now and get something done. Also, with your agenda, I want to point out a couple of things. There's a packet of pictures that was included of the campsite. I wanted to do that, basically, to emphasize how serious that problem is up on Broadway. You see the electrical run across the ground that is probably coming from a generator. I don't have all the information on that, but I'm sure that's what's happening. You see water lines running up the hill, and I'm not sure exactly what those are doing and how they're getting water and what the purpose was of that. But all of those things, especially like the electrical, the dangers of electrical, you know, starting a fire is an issue, and you can see that. And so I wanted to do that for everyone to see, I think these are good pictures that demonstrate what is really up there. And if you ever have the chance to walk, look at my police chief, I think he would, or one of his staff will gladly take you on a tour if you would really like to walk it. I've done it a couple of times, and they will do that, so you can get a first bird's-eye view of what was going, firsthand knowledge of what's going on up there. I also wanted to do that, and my recommendation is that those pictures be included with the letter that we sent to the county, because as far as I know, former Health and Human Services Director, Don Simone, is the only one who has walked that site, and I took him up there on a tour of the site, and that was several months ago. So I think it's important that they see exactly why we are as concerned as we are. The next point, I wanted, the next attachment that is with your packet today is the memorandum from Chief Joe Wren to me regarding his perspective from the Police Department on the homeless problem that we have, what's causing it, and what is going on there. And if you'd like him to report on that, I will turn that portion over to him, but I'll leave that to council. I'm assuming you've all read his report, and whether or not you want any more detailed questions on that, you're welcome to do that. Finally, I did also include the efforts to stop this from moving forward, the flyer that was sent out by the Republican Party. And in my staff report, I put some things in there to refute those statements that are made that are just not true, that are in that report. And I think I'd like to just mention those quickly. They talk about providing housing with no accountability. The navigation center, the goal of that is to provide that accountability. That's exactly what it does. What we have now is a campsite up on Broadway with no accountability. The navigation center will require some things from there and will help them be more organized and hopefully move towards getting out of homelessness. They talk about, this was the big one, drug use allowed. Drug use is not allowed in the navigation center. You hear the talk about, you know, that in order to, for the Martin, to comply with the Martin vs. Boise case, you can't turn people away. Well, that's true. If somebody is high on drugs, or if they're drunk from alcohol, yes, you would need to allow them to come in. If they were brought to the center by a police officer, they're in that condition, they could be let in, but they're not allowed to drink alcohol on the premises, and they're not allowed to use drugs on the premises. That's where maybe some people are getting the mix-up in that and what is required by the law. We are not allowed, we can set those rules and say that they can't. And I confirm this with the county, with Daniel Del Monte and his discussions with Volunteers of America, that those things are not allowed in the navigation center. The third one, circumvent land use policy. This is in reference to the county being able to do this without going out to bid and making changes. Well, state law allows that. They complied with state law to move forward with this, and that was all done legally. Free needles, crack pipes, condoms, et cetera, from Sierra Harm Reduction. Again, not true. There is no plan for that to be part of this facility. And then finally, civil disrespect. And I kind of laughed a little bit at this one, because I said, "What we have right now is civil disrespect. We're trying to remove the people out of that and provide some civil respect, if you will." And for them to say that this would put in civil disrespect is just the opposite of what it would accomplish. So I just wanted to point out those items that are part of that memo. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to you, council. I listed in there three options, and they're basically just authorize the mayor to sign the letter. I would recommend we sign it and get it to them as soon as possible, and then possibly even read the letter at their meeting on Tuesday, if the mayor's available to do that. And then, the second option is, if there's changes to the letter, we can do those tonight and have those ready to go. And then, obviously, the third is not to do anything, but I don't think that's an option we want to do tonight. So with that, oh, one last thing, if I could, I wanted to mention, and I think we should mention this, that is concerning. It's my understanding that a memo was sent out today from the county administrative officer, and I want to thank, somebody pegged Matt in the car showed it to me. I hadn't seen it yet, because it just came out today, actually recommending that the vote on Perks Court be delayed on Tuesday. Recommending that they not move forward and that they delay the vote and look stronger at Prose Court. So I just want to make the council aware of that and the public that that is on, was added to their board agenda item today.
So that was the reason, just look stronger?
That's kind of what I read into it, was that was what the reason for it.
I haven't gotten it, I don't think.
I just saw it when I got here at this meeting, so I haven't had a chance to pull it up. Dennis hasn't pulled up, if anybody asks questions about it. But that's my understanding, is that the delay to give them time to negotiate and look further at Prose Court, or, yeah, Prose Road. So with that, I'll turn it back to you for any questions. Happy to answer those, and what staff we have here, also.
All right. Thank you, Cleve. Any questions for Cleve before, I was going to invite Chief Wren to also kind of summarize his letter. But if there's any questions for Cleve, we can take those first. Okay. All right. Chief, would you like to say anything about your memo?
It was, it truly was just a snapshot. I mean, we can get really into the weeds about a lot of these topics and discuss...
You mean, it gets worse?
It gets worse. Yeah, this is a, this is the wrapper. We haven't pulled back the wrapper and actually delved into the, some of the more disturbing issues associated with the homeless situation here in Placerville. One of the things I really want to place an emphasis on, that I've heard over the last, going on seven years here, is that, you know, it's mentioned and kind of glossed over, there's no services in Placerville. There truly is no services in Placerville that can help break the cycle of homelessness for this population. There are independent entities and governmental entities that will provide a service, but those are outpatient or outreach-type services. We don't have anything where we can pull somebody that we have a true belief in them being able to pull themselves out of this scenario and place them with somebody to help guide them through that process so they can be successively housed. We just don't have that, and if it's out there, it's not at a significant enough amount to make an impact that's tangible for the community. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, you know, the stuff that we deal with outside of the advocates that volunteer daily with this population. Our staff has as much, if not more, contact with the homeless population in all of El Dorado County. So.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions for?
No, I just would like to say that I thought your letter was very powerful, and I really want to thank you for addressing it in the way that you did. And if folks that read this don't understand it, I don't know what more you have to put in it to make it, you know, make them understand what you and your, and the police force are going through, as well as us. And quite frankly, it's just so lopsided, and I think your letter really makes that clear.
Any other comments?
Yeah, well, I was just, I want to make sure we focus this meeting on the letter. The agenda item is, are we going to approve the letter, or are we not going to approve the letter? For once, I don't have any changes to your letter. Oh, my gosh! Wow!
I do.
Okay. Well, you know, this is not an issue from three years ago, it's an issue from 10 and 15 and 20 years ago. And, you know, we have had problems with getting collaboration and everybody wanting to do their own thing. It's part of the reason that it's taken us so long to get where we are. And when we decided on the Perks Court, I supported that decision. I said, "Everybody, we should just put everything behind Perks Court and go for it," and I still believe that. I know that there are more than one entity who are coming up with their own navigation center, their own plan. They're not working collaboratively to make it successful, and so I don't support those things. I think we need to move forward, and I support your letter.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. I do, I support it as well. There is one addition I'd like to make to it, and that is that this issue is not just a Placerville issue, it's an El Dorado County issue. And as it, and in that light, it also reflects the toll it's taking on our EMS system and our hospital system, including the emergency department, and the impact it has on the staff there as well, in terms of time and energy they spend, whereas, and you don't need to go into all the detail, but that issue is very relevant, because the people are only getting half the care they really need. And the longer we, you know, the longer we take to get this over the threshold, the longer it's going to take to get people the proper health care they need, which gives them, also gives them the opportunity to get out of this cycle. And I do know that, you know, with one EMS unit down, our guys are already busy, and in talking to one of the guys that's out there, he says they spend an inordinate amount of time on this population. And that's not to say this is going to go away. Nothing that we're going to talk about, or anybody will mention, is going to disappear. It's just, it's incremental movement towards a better solution than doing nothing. And in my mind, so that's my addition, is that part. I don't know if we need to add, and I'll let you all decide, also, we have kicked this can down the road so many times, and every time we do this, it's another delay tactic, in my mind. Now, you know, maybe the county has a good reason to do that, but every time we get on the precipice of getting this done, we hit another, somebody comes up with a reason to delay it again.
That's a good word, tactic. And that's what we keep running.
But I want to stay positive. I want to give them all the positive reasons why this needs to be done, for our community, for the businesses in this town and the businesses in the county, whether, because like Chief Wren said, this is going to, you know, they're not going to stay in this town forever, because they're going to, you know, they're going to be uncomfortable here at some point, and they may end up going back to the county, and then they're going to have issues with it. This is not a city-only thing. It's a whole-community thing, no matter where they go. I'll tell you just a real quick thing. I had a person that wanted to start, to bring his business into Placerville. He looked at three sites, none of them on Broadway. All three sites, when they reviewed those sites, had homeless people meandering around for one reason or another, and he decided he didn't want to come to Placerville because of that. And that was just a week or two ago. And his staff said, "I don't want to be in that situation." So that's it for now. But I do strongly think we need to recognize the impact to our healthcare system, which completely impacts our entire county, because the more times we take up ambulances and we take up the emergency room, it's a nonprofit hospital. The amount of money they're expending on this issue could be allocated to other places to improve the quality of care in our community.
You know, it's probably too bad we didn't get a short report from them.
Mm-hmm. We might.
And can I add to that, Dennis, in saying, I remember when the issue with Hangtown-Haven, and I remember there were two or three nurses from the hospital came and addressed us and begged us to please approve of that, and they said it's because they get the homeless people in there, they fix them up and give them what, and medication and stuff, and then they send them out in the dark, and they said, "There's nobody to help them and follow up." And pretty soon, they're back again.
Right.
So I think that is really a good point.
And I'd like to, you may touch on this too, but we're all pretty much on the same side here right now, so really, if you're going to talk to us, you're going to be preaching to the choir, for the most part. I would really encourage you who have, who feel the need to comment, your comments are going to be best suited at the Board of Supervisors' meeting. And tonight, this is about getting this letter to the Board of Supervisors. And so if you have ideas to add to the letter, great.
But concentrate on...
Right. But really, if, you know, butts in seats at the Board of Supervisors, sharing with them your stories, the impact it's going to have on the community, the community that you know, from your experience, is going to be important for them to hear.
Good comments, Dennis. Patty, do you want to add anything?
I think I did.
Okay.
I do want to highlight a couple of things from the chief's letter. You know, I think that there's this notion that, for one, homeless people are coming to the area from elsewhere. And there's another notion that this is Placerville's problem. These are Placerville's homeless, this is Placerville's problem. And I think that the statistics that you included that showed that the majority, or a larger proportion, of the homeless residents that are currently in Placerville previously resided in the county, and only 42% of them are from within city limits. I think that's a really important point that the county needs to understand. And another thing that you alluded to, you know, the Sheriff's Department has been working hard to reduce their homeless population in the county. And as that's happened, our homeless population in the city has increased. And we don't have the Sheriff's Department's budget. Basically, the city of Placerville has been subsidizing the county's homelessness issues, because they won't address, they won't take the steps necessary to address this in a meaningful way. That's not just moving people from one place to another. And I didn't include that in the letter. I do want to just stay positive and encourage the Board of Supervisors to continue, but, you know, if you think that we need to, then that's up for discussion.
And I wanted to interject that, too. I did appreciate you saying that and just really asking the supervisors, "Don't listen to those naysayers, please," you know, because they're going to come up with, Dennis's word, tactic every time, to delay this. That's what they do. And we just, it's got to stop. And I think there's been enough professionals, there's been enough people who have looked into this, and they really approve of this navigation center, and I, as, again, we've alluded, that it's not going to be the answer to all, but it's certainly going to make a huge dent, and it's going to help us get started.
And were you going to say something?
I was just going to say, Dennis had brought up, this is an El Dorado County issue, so I thought those thoughts could be captured under that, instead of making a separate...
Yeah. Yeah, I'm on board with that. Consensus? Everyone on board with that? Kind of building out that paragraph?
Yep.
And then I do want to take a moment to read by...
And then I do want to take a moment to read Vice Mayor Michael Saragosa's comments. He says, "Colleagues and residents, I apologize for not being in attendance tonight. I am the officiant for a dear friend's wedding, so I am out of town. I fully support the mayor's letter to the El Dorado County Board of Supervisors. I urge the BOS to move forward and not get sidetracked by last-minute maneuvers to either delay or kill the proposed location at Perks Court. The city council supported the sheriff's proposal previously. Upon further study, the county discovered the sheriff's proposal would not qualify for the existing funding currently available. So, it's my understanding there may be a new proposal from Edso. I have one, I ha- just have one comment on the latest Edso proposal, and it's from the movie Jerry, Jerry Maguire. Show me the money. Show me the money. How is this proposal will meet federal and state funding requirements? If those funds are not available..." Sorry about that. "If those funds are not available, show me the money that is coming out of the county general fund or the sheriff's operating budget to make this proposal work. If you cannot show me the money, then it's not a real proposal. We have a funded proposal for Perks Court. Let's move forward with what we know is feasible. Thank you for indulging me with my written comments." Michael, Vice Mayor, City of Placerville. Okay. Without further comments from the council, I'm going to open this up to public comment. I want to do, do things a little differently to start. I would love to just kind of get a show of hands of folks that are not supportive of this letter. If anyone is not in support of the city sending this letter out. Okay, we've got two? Three? Okay, we have three. Everyone that is in support of showing this, sending this letter to the county? Okay. All right, thank you. It is Friday night. I very much appreciate the community coming out tonight to provide us with feedback. I want to give, give you a chance to give that feedback. I encourage you to keep your comments short. If you're reiterating a comment made previously, like, like one minute or less would be very much appreciated, I'm sure, by our staff and those in attendance. If you're reiterating a point made by a previous speaker, feel free to say, "I'm echoing the point made by so-and-so." And if you have something, you know, in addition to just voicing your support or your opposition to us sending this letter that you feel is important for the community to hear and that is new, then please feel free to provide that information. Three minutes is the maximum for comments. And, and again, one minute or less would be even better tonight since it's, it's a Friday afternoon. All right, so with that, please step up to the podium if you would like to speak on this
Michael Mueller, 26-year resident. I'm strongly against this ridiculous proposal. Don't send that letter. It's embarrassing for you. And don't make your problem the, the county of El Dorado's problem and my problem because it'll be in my backyard and shame on you.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
My name is Mary Ann Mueller, and I am also-
Hi.
I'm also, you know, it's, it's not that we're against a navigation center. It's where you're proposing to put it over on Perks Court. It really is not a good place, in my opinion. And I can guarantee you that just me by myself, I am actually representing probably 30 to 50 other families, and we are highly against it going over there. It's not a good place. It's not a good place. So, I will go to the county meetings and I will put my foot down because I'm super against it going over on Port, Perks Court. But I am for a navigation center. I will help. I will help, whatever I can do to help, but just don't put it over there.
All right. Thank you, Mary Ann.
We have helped. We were a part of, we were a part of-
Michael, you've made your comments already. Thank you.
Just so you know, we were a part of the lighting candle, and so we are, we have a heart for these people, but it's the wrong place.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, David Zelinski, sort of wearing the hat of Service Officer, American Legion, Marine Corps League. I've served probably 500 homeless veterans over eight years. I've had deaths, I've had suicides, one murder, arrests in my presence, practically in my car. If someone comes to the navigation center and they're filled with drugs or alcohol, you don't put them in there, they take them to the ER. They're going to die if you don't take them to detox. Then after you're down at the ER and they're safely detoxed, then you figure out if they go to the navigation center or not. So that's a matter of life and death. I like the idea that Housing El Dorado is developing of having, almost like a land trust, and I want to talk to Frank some more about that. The more locations we have, the better. You can't put the white racist gang in the middle of everybody else. You have to segregate them in their own spot. You can't put the sex offenders in with everyone else. They have to have their own spot. The people with animals will have to have a place that can handle animals. So you, you do have to have what's called administrative segregation as you do this. So the more locations, the better, so we can do this. There's not going to be one size fits all. I, I've had a good working relationship with everybody and I think that we can collaborate. Hopefully Sergeant Caddell or his team will help me with one guy who pops out of custody on Wednesday. I left a message and I, I need help. And, you know, we had a, a small homeless shelter at Perks Court about eight years ago. I guess the house burned down, but, you know, that, that location would be near the community health, and so I could, I could be comfortable with it as a place for some, a, a population there. We have eight or nine homeless shelters right now on the Western Slope. Each have their own filters and their own set of rules. So, the more locations, the more segregation, the more rules, the more filters, the, the more successful we're going to be. And so I'm a resource, I'm available to everybody. Almost all of you have my email or phone, but if you don't know how to reach me. And so I, I've had a lot of hands-on. And everybody's got a piece of the truth and it takes a lot to have a few saves. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And I have to apologize, we, we do have town hall improvements planned, but our timer is not working tonight. So, Dennis, do you mind being the timekeeper?
Neither. Cleaver, you got Cleaver?
Do you want to just?
Please.
Can you just hold, like, at one minute, hold it up and give people a little notice? And maybe at two minutes and, and then at three minutes, like, you know? Okay. All right. Thank you, David, for those comments.
Sue Rodman, I'm a Placerville resident and have been for the last 30 years. And my comments are these. The pla- the police chief's report makes it very clear that the homeless people in El Dorado County are our neighbors, not some imports from elsewhere. It's an ongoing situation and it has a long history. The ideal situation would be that everybody has a home, a job, and is contributing to the community. However, this is not ideal. It is reality, where there are people living in conditions that would be considered animal abuse if they were livestock. Every attempt to improve this situation has been met with resistance and negativity. There are always those my mother called aginners, those who are against everything but have no solutions to offer. The Perks Court Navigation Center is no different. From the early attempts at Hangtown Haven to the present, there have been those who have attempted to thwart every effort to help these unfortunate people. This Republican flyer is a disgrace to the Republican Party and it's full of lies. It needs to go in the trash where it belongs. While the sheriff proposal looked good, it could not be funded, so it's not a viable option. It is dead. Let it go, people. It's way past time to take action and move forward. In case you haven't noticed, fire season is here. It has been here since June and it will probably still be here until November. We have already had several winters with rain and cold. It would help if there were shelter before we have another winter. Perks Court is probably not perfect, but it is a vast improvement over doing nothing. We owe it to ourselves, if no one else, to at least give it a try and learn by doing instead of watching more homeless people die on our streets. This is the best chance we've had in a long time to help our homeless neighbors, and we just need to do it. Mayor Taylor's letter puts the issue as well, and she has my support. There have been enough endless meetings. It's time to get this navigation center done.
Thank you, Sue.
Hi, I'm Maureen Dion Perry, President of Housing El Dorado, a local nonprofit. I really support your letter, and the only thing I would wonder about adding is I feel that there's a lot of obstruction going on. And I feel that there are deceptive actions from county employees and elected officials to circulate lies about the Perks Court project to create drama, obstruction, when they know the truth. County staff is making continued delays. They delayed the voting of the, on the project when they had not appropriately allocated the monies. And now we have a recent memo to recommend pausing Perks Court to pursue Piero's Road. I am very suspicious of the role of county staff, employees, and then, you know, you move on to the Republican Party, where it all feeds out, too, and is coming back. It's very, very disheartening to see the trails that bring us back to county employees and elected officials behind this obstruction. And I would encourage you, I know you want to stay positive, but I would encourage you to point out the fact that this is very curious, suspicious, deceptive, what is going on and that you, you see it. And I think naming it is a valuable thing for everyone to start doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
I had planned to say other things. I'm Peg Van Der Carre from Placerville. But I, my focus right now, tonight, not wanting to preach to the choir with everything already said, is that I want to express sympathy for the folks who are nearby, who are concerned. One thing that was encouraging to me was, and I think I read it in the chief's letter, I've read it in other research, that the area around a facility like this that's planned in Perks Court benefits, it doesn't end up with more homeless people there. I know that there are homeless people camping down Perks Court and down by the river and all in that area and gathered this, I believe, will help contain that and have resources to have people be able to get to the new community health center more easily. There's sidewalks down that road on the east side and crosswalks down by Walmart. So, I, I do want to express concern and sympathy. I, I believe, and I don't have foolproof, that the homes nearby will actually benefit increased water, increased sewer, increased electricity in that, in that lane. And I think moving forward on this as a first step, as David said, we need lots of different options. This is not the option for everything. But it's a first step and we need to get going with it, so I encourage the letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg.
I, I do want to ask people to hold the applause. It's very, I, I appreciate the passion in the room, but we, we want to make everyone feel welcome speaking and we don't want to add delay, so. Go ahead.
Hi, Don Van Der Carre. I learned years and years ago that my wife is right almost all the time, so I can only second her motion. I've been before you many times and I'm going to keep this very short because you don't need to hear me again. But I and many others have sought refuge and care for, for homeless people for many, many years, several decades, as a matter of fact. I want to thank Chief Ren for his excellent document. And we now have a program that will make a major step toward reducing the plight of our friends, our relatives, who have suffered for too many years. We've had too many people go to ER. We've had too many people, we've had memorial services for. We have a program now. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I read Don's second letter this afternoon. I accidentally found it in my emails. And Cleve, you need to check me on this, but I believe the word "long-term" was in there, to pursue Piero's as a long-term project. And if that's so, that is not really in anybody's best interest because that would be abandoning Perks Court. But I think that whatever letter is sent needs to incorporate your reaction to the Piero's Road proposal in order to be complete. I would urge you to urge them to move as soon as possible on Perks Court. The CAO mentioned in his letter that Piero's could be ready as early as March 2023. Well, according to the schedule that the county has been on all this time, that's only one month to maybe six weeks earlier than the completion and readiness at Perks Court. That makes absolutely no sense to be juggling two projects at the same time. When you do that administratively, usually you just slow down everything because you can't focus on the one thing that you're trying to do. I think it's not worth derailing the original project. And again, it's within the city. I thought we had dealt with this. Perks is ideal. It is safe for pedestrians. It is close to the new services building. It is close to inexpensive sources of shopping, Walmart, the Goodwill thrift store. It is closer to Brew Road than anything they've ever had before. I also want to say that I believe the delay was strategic and political. The flyers that have been put out around town are ugly and incendiary and divisive. I love this area and I love all the people who live in this area. They don't all vote with me and I don't all vote with them. But we are all God's children and we're going to have to work together to get anything done here. This kind of divisiveness is just not to be tolerated, and I think we should not honor it by allowing it to derail anything. I think true civil disrespect is interference with the city and the county's efforts to restore safety and to provide services to those in need. I just want to acknowledge to, to Chief Ren, those photos are absolutely realistic. Jonathan and I have been holding a Bible study at the top of, of a Broadway camp at the Horseshoe Pit for the last four weeks, and they are more than realistic. That's exactly what it looks like up there. The people who are living there are without services and without basic human needs.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, getting close to evening. Kathy Lishman, I support the letter. This isn't about the need to do something, it's about what to do. And how many could even be housed at Piero's Road? And only 60 can be housed at Perks Court, and what about the other 400? I mean, I, I know that isn't what this is about tonight, but then what happens to the other 400? And where does the money come from to do, to do something? And what is the plan for Quartz Mountain, which keeps going on and on? And it's not visible like Broadway is, and it's not as big as Broadway, but something really needs to be helped there, too. And Kara, I'd like to say, if you're going to read a letter, make it a short version because they will only give you three minutes.
That's good advice. Thank you, Kathy.
Hi, Margaret Lewis, Co-Chair of the Continuum of Care. And I wanted to let you know that our voting, our support, and our funds have all been allocated to Perks Court, so we support- we support that letter as it's aligned with our intentions for going forward. And the other thing I would point out, because unfortunately I'm not going to be able to be at the meeting on Tuesday, what's most concerning to me in the memo from CAO is the caveat in it that if Perros Court, excuse me, Piero's Road, if it is found to be feasible, so to put this on hold for something that may not even be feasible is unconscionable, and I'm just, you know, the work we've done, the work we've all done, I just, I cannot conceive of pausing this for any period of time on something that may not even be feasible.
Martin Entwistle, I'm the Associate Chief Medical Officer at Marshall Hospital. There are many things I could say. I just want to say, we support your approach, and I think there's very pragmatic drive for let's get something done and move. Time is of the essence, as people have said. There's been long protracted debate. We have an opportunity to do something now. Dennis spoke well about the impact of the homeless population and the resources available for healthcare, and this is not about not supporting their needs, but there are better different ways of doing this, and the Navigation Center is one piece of that puzzle that enables us, as a main provider of healthcare, to focus on the rest of the community and apply our, as everyone knows, somewhat limited resources to do the best job for all. So very supportive of this, the opportunity we have in front of us right now that is implementable with funding attached to it, and not kick the can down the road, but let's move on this and do what we can. It's only one piece of the puzzle, but it's a very significant start that will help other people build other pieces of the puzzle that will fit in. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
Ruth Michelson. Yes, of course, I support this, and I thank you for having this meeting today. I want to just bring up a comment, question, on a little bit of a side issue, but I think it's relevant. You know, we as citizens, we look to you to be our leaders here in the city, and we look to the Board of Supervisors to also be our leaders, and we look to staff as well, our city manager, our chief of police, et cetera. Most of those people have been elected, not all, but we put a lot of faith into our leaders to take us in the right direction. And to me, it's so disconcerting, and I'm not saying that you can resolve this because it's not a city issue, it's a county issue, but it's another reason why I really strongly support you writing this letter, is that when there's something wrong going on, when in one of our supervisors' offices, we have an assistant who is heading this, who, look, this is supposed to be a nonpartisan position, people in these positions, it's not political, it's not Democrat, it's not Republican, Libertarian, Green Party, or anything else, and I think it's very disturbing to citizens when someone in a nonpartisan position is making something very political. And I think, just as a complaint that was unfounded was served to the Fair Political Practices Commission against a supervisor. Personally, I think that same kind of complaint, and it would be warranted, should be placed to that assistant who is not acting appropriately, and I, that's why I say it's not anything you can do, but why I especially support you writing this letter, because things are just not right right now in our government, and some correction needs to be taken. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Art Edwards. I was the president of Hang Town Haven that you've talked about. I was also the, now I am on the board of Housing Eldorado. Needless to say, I'm very much for what you're doing, and I really love your letter. It was beautifully written, and just, I was going to give you a little bit of history of homelessness, but I'll just touch on it vaguely now a little bit. Twenty years ago, when I was a lad of 70, we first started with talking to people about various spots, and the mayor at the time, Wendy Thomas, was a big help. She and I worked together to build Hang Town Haven here. We've talked, presented the Board of Supervisors with many ideas over the years, some they liked, but none of them did they take advantage of. So this is a real strange and very interesting situation. What goes around comes around, because we, as I say, 20 years ago, we told this county that Perks Court was the best location for a homeless shelter and everything else that you've been talking about. So I just, I'll leave you with that. I was going to talk about the fire issue, but you've already covered that pretty well. We're very concerned about the fire. So I'd like to end with a statement from the Bible. What you do for the least of mine, you do for me. And I would like people to pick my wife up, and she probably fell down the floor when I said that. So any questions for me? I've got a lot to talk about, but it's not appropriate.
Thank you for your comments, Art.
Cheryl Traynor. I've lived in the county for 32 years, and at present, I live within a half an hour, half a mile or so from Perks Court, and I support it being built there, and I am very, very interested in having discussion with my neighbors, because I see it as a good place, and obviously, we have different opinions, but I just want to have that be known, that someone that lives in the neighborhood is supportive of it. And I have worked at the shelter, and I know what the reality of being part of the shelter is, so thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. All right, oh, is there one?
Yes, my name is Marty Knight, and I'm a Placerville resident and from Eldorado County for 22 years. The reason I'm coming is particularly to support your letter, which is excellent, but I'm a former mayor from Burlingame, California, and I remembered circumstances that we were in like this, where we had people come out to talk about their support of something, but the information didn't get on to the other body that was next going to be making that decision. So I'm one of those people that appreciates copies going to everyone who might have any interest. I've read the packet of letters from supportive citizens, and they've made some excellent comments, and I would just wanted to encourage you to maybe have a packet that goes along with your letter, indicating the things that you've heard, in case there are people that can't attend the Board of Supervisors meeting, for example, so that they will understand the fervor with which the people in the community have indicated the support. And that way, the good ideas that have been in some of the letters that I've read and comments that I'm sure you've been hearing for a long time will get to them, and you've had excellent reports from the fire chief and things that probably should be included as sort of an appendix to the, to the letter, to make sure that they know what you've been hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Appreciate your comments. All right, I see nobody else stepping up to the mic, so I'm going to close public comment at this time, and, oh. This is last call for public comments, so if you would like to speak, get up now in preparation, we've got one person.
As one who has written a letter that I was late getting here to give to you, I second the idea of attaching some supportive letters behind what you're presenting to the Board of Supervisors. I can't tell you how refreshing it is to come into an environment where you're talking about things realistically, you're dealing with a problem. Anybody who has been in business, I've been here since '78 as a real estate broker, I'm telling you, I see the effects on business. The gentleman who stated that someone was coming to town to look at, about bringing a business into Placerville, I face that all the time. Now, I'm less involved than I used to be, but I'm telling you, it is a serious problem, and anybody who's tried to shop at Walmart or the drugstore on the corner, the Goodwill, whatever, the problems down there, and Cameron Park, are just horrendous. So anything that is going to give people who have nothing else to do and nowhere else to go, mental illness, where families that live here have children and teens that are suffering with drugs and all kinds of things, I know quite a few of my friends who are in that situation. I guarantee you, there is no place for those kids to go, period. They wind up in jail, they get an ankle bracelet, they try and deal with this, and the families are destroyed, and they are our neighbors, our friends. So I encourage, and I thank you very much for the very positive stand that you're taking and the realistic view that you are portraying about this problem, and a possible start for a solution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Jessie. Jessie, I've lived here for 11 years, and actually on the corner there of, right across from Herbert Green, and I've walked the trails there on a regular basis, my friends and I. And we do appreciate any help that we can give people who are having so much difficulty around there. The people that need the housing and the services and such are going to be there. They're going to be there. So how we can create a positive, cleaner, more hygienic, compassionate answer to these issues is something that I, you know, I really feel that all of us need to be involved in. So we all share in the problem every day, and we can either make it better, or we can try to shove it away, but I'm a proponent of making things better, and all of us being a part of the solution, and compromising and giving and caring. So I see the need, obviously. I have lived there for a long time, and really see, see the dire need for assistance there to make that a better environment for everybody, for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessie.
Hi, my name's Diane Rubenoy. I'm president of NAMI Eldorado County and a Placerville resident. I'm here to express my support for your letter and appreciation for Chief Wren's statement also, and I'm not going to reiterate what everybody else said, but there are a couple of things that concern me about the letter, and I think it's been brought out here that there's a little funny stuff going on in the county government, and I'm just thinking it might be worth somehow alluding to, that there is kind of hanky-panky going on. I mean, the vote was four to one, and yet and still, these people are trying to obstruct the will of the people, and that concerns me. I heard it from a sheriff's, a person in the sheriff's office. I said to him, you know, the county approved the strategic plan, the vote was four to one to go ahead with Perks Corner, and he goes, and? You know, like, that didn't matter. It matters. And I'm just wondering if there's some way you can kind of allude to that in your letter. So, thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
So I'm Margie Lopez Reed, and I'm a Placerville resident for 41 years now. It's kind of hard to believe, but lest you need one more person to say that they're supportive of the letter, then I'm this person. And I, and kind of what this last lady referred to, it just really has seemed to me, every time I talk to someone who is opposed to it, they bring up, well, why don't we just do what the sheriff proposed? He has this, you know, site located, and it would be, you know, it'd just work out so perfectly. But I think it's clear to everybody who really looks at the issue that that would mean, you know, a money loss to us. We would lose the money, and we would have to pay something back, and, you know, it's true, it's all tax money, but it's tax money spread out over a much bigger group of people. So do we, you know, pay for the whole thing ourselves, or do we share it with the state of California? Maybe the federal government, too, I'm not sure. Yes? Okay. So that's, you know, that's my two cents. I think there's some power struggles going on here, be it political or not, but, you know, that's what's in the way, and somehow, we have to work around that. That's it.
Thank you, Martine, for your comments. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Again, I want to thank everybody that came tonight to speak, and I want to encourage everyone who has a strong opinion about this to also send letters to the Board of Supervisors, and if you are able to show up to the meeting on Tuesday. Do you know what time this item's going to be heard?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
You know what time it's going to be heard. All right, I will bring this back to the council.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the mayor to send a
Wait, 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 wait. Oh. Okay.
After listening to the comments and considering the memo put out by Don Ashton, I think that we should take a position for the Board of Supervisors to consider. I mean, we previously considered Perros Court, and we decided that it wasn't appropriate for short or long term, and I would like us
Perros Road.
Perros Road, I'm sorry, thank you. Perros Road. I'd like us to reaffirm that
Okay.
And not show support. We don't support them moving forward with that action
Good idea.
In our letter. That's all I wanted to add.
Okay.
You know, quite a few people spoke on that.
I am in support of adding that as well.
There's, there has been numerous, and I don't know if you could incorporate this in there, but there have been numerous 5-0 votes to move this project forward on both the county side and the city side, numerous 5-0 votes. So, so the idea that at the ninth hour, they want to start unraveling this is, in my mind, inappropriate.
Yeah.
Political.
Yeah, it is political theater.
So would you like to put a stronger stance, some language?
Well, I think, I think that we need to acknowledge that there's been a lot of momentum and a lot of effort on both the city and the county side to move this issue forward, to now start kind of this machination of trying to unravel it. The, there's the 5-0 votes, the money is there now. The money's there now. There might be a little money that's still not, not allocated for the roads, but, but the reality is, is most of the money's there now. I like the idea of attaching the letters. I think they should see them.
Yeah.
Plus, they're going to get them, too. It's probably going to be some duplicates, but that's, I think it's important for them to see that. And I'm, and I'm just going to say this. I think the folks that are, the political folks that are using their, their internal positions of power, that are not willing to step out into the light, I have some strong words for them, but I think they're But, but I think they're cowards.
They are cowards.
I think they're cowards not to step into the light
Yep.
And have a meaningful conversation with our community.
Yep.
And let us hear what they have to say, rather than trying to pull strings in the background and not, not show their face, and it, this, this is what we need, is political discourse in the public for people to have conversations, and doing it in the shadows, pulling strings in the shadows, is just a coward's way of doing this. Don't put that in the letter.
Well said, Dennis.
So I'm going to continue my motion. But I would like to authorize the mayor to send a letter with whatever, and I don't know how to say this, so we
Just language reaffirming our opposition to Perros Road?
As well as adding a section to
Well, to add anything that
Emphasize that this is a county-wide problem.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
And
And the impact on our, on our EMS system and the hospital.
Okay.
Will continue.
And perhaps also mentioning how irregular it would be to change course at this point after so many affirmative votes on this matter. after so many affirmative votes on this matter.
That's mild. But I, and I realize, you know, we, we have to do what we have to do.
I, I do want to recognize, you know, there has been a lot of noise, and there are things that have happened that I am very concerned about. I do want to recognize, though, that the Board of Supervisors up until this point, and I am very hopeful, they have really stepped up and shown leadership on this. And I, you know, I really want to encourage them to continue to do that. I want to, at this point, give them the benefit of the doubt
Mm-hmm.
And the support that they need, that we are committed to being good partners with them, and that this is necessary, and remind them of their responsibility. I am certainly
And I think you kind of alluded to that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think you did, and I appreciated that.
Do we want to state that, that affirmation does not, you said extend to Pirros Road?
No, it does not extend to Pirros Road. Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll address Pirros Road in there. Okay. And, and on that, on that note as well, you know, the reason that the city takes issues with Pirros Road, as Cleve mentioned in the staff report, is there is no outside space at Pirros Road. It seems incredible, you know, the, the service contract as of now is that people will essentially be staying at this facility all day, every day, except to go out to appointments and jobs and, you know. So to think that they, we would be trying to provide support to people in need and not allow them space outside
Correct.
Is, seems counterproductive to me. And furthermore, there is no bike trails, there's no
There's no sidewalks.
There's no sidewalks.
And it's a really bad corner, if you've ever negotiated it in a car.
It is right across the street from a daycare, and I'm not sure if the size is sufficient to meet the needs that we have addressed. And I'm also opposed to it, and I think I can speak for everyone here, if not speak up, but so much work has been put in to Perks Court at this time, and you don't achieve anything if you don't make up your mind and then follow through.
Right.
And so that, for all of those reasons, I would not be supportive of them changing course at this point.
And, and, and I will support, too, the county staff that's done, I mean, we're, I don't want to cast a negative
Right.
You know, eye on them, because the staff has been very supportive of, you know,
The staff has been diligently following the board's direction.
Following their direction and trying to get this thing moving.
Yeah.
So, a lot of, like you say, money, work, a lot of hours put in, so
They're going to get whiplash here.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and Patty, with your motion, do you, you want Cleve and I just to work on these tweaks?
I, I do.
We've got the
And it's hard to, I can't make a motion with, you know, with mentioning everything that you said.
Yeah.
But I support sending a letter.
Okay. With those changes.
I will second that with those changes.
Okay.
Can I, can I just, I want to list, make sure we'll get it in the minutes, what those changes were. So this is a county-wide problem, not a city problem. Reaffirm Pirros Road, our objection to Pirros Road. It's been a, many unanimous votes up to this point. Don't change course.
I, I'm not sure that they've been unanimous.
But I said numerous
No, it hasn't.
I said numerous unanimous votes, and there have been numerous unanimous votes
Mm-hmm.
To move this project forward.
But not lately. And there's been numerous 4-0 votes, which isn't nothing.
But we can say numerous or 4-1.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 4-1.
Yeah. And then the last thing is the health care issue.
I was just going to say, and the, and the health care issue.
Yeah. Right. Does that capture it, then, those items? Okay.
All right. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And then just to build off of that, we'll also include Chief Wren's letter and the letter from the public.
That we've received.
I think the whole packet, like we got, and maybe even more of the, all right.
Okay. That brings this meeting to an end. Again, thank you so much for coming out, and, and please continue to support this critical project to the Board of Supervisors. And thank you to staff and my colleagues as well for, for coming out tonight.